Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of Somersville City Council this 27th day of November 2023. I'd like to welcome our guests tonight and move right into tonight's agenda. First item on the agenda being consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on November 13th of 2023.
Let the group wave the reading, please.
Okay, Council, we have a motion. Motion wants to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes that were presented in your pack? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment, Amy?
Only available on the agenda.
Okay, good deal. No public comment tonight. The first item, or the next item on the agenda is approval of engineering agreement with Thrasher Engineering for the Webster Road Project. I'm pleased to have tonight with us from Thrasher Clay Riley and Cody Turner. The first thing I'd like to state before they take the podium here and, you know, go ahead, guys. No, go ahead. I just want to say that we ran the appropriate process for selecting an engineer. On that panel sat our superintendent James Corbett, water plant operator Robbie Brown, and councilman Chuck Shaw. And after a thorough process required by law, by statute, again, we've selected Thrasher Engineering to be our partner in this project. So with that said, Cody and Clay, I turn the podium over to you.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Cody Turner. This is Clay here. We've got the agreement for, an engineering service agreement for the planning, which is the formulation of the P E R. So it's a funding application which goes into the funding agencies. And this is just for this phase. There'll be later phases added, which will be engineering design, you know, your R P R, Resident Project Representative, which will be later in the project. But this is just an agreement to get things started, to get an agreement to submit the funding applications so that we can secure the funds to do the project, which I'm sure all are aware of, should be the upsides of the line, about 39 out here for four inch agents in order to get more water down to the Golly River P S D side. So I've got four copies here and you can hand them out. Have me all review them if you want to.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm just Clay.
Clay Riley.
Clay Riley from Thrasher. And first, let me say thank you. You know, I was involved and Cody was involved in the line number 19 by Derek King Queen.
Derek Queen, yeah.
And so we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city again. So when Cody talks about the preliminary P E R, what he's really talking about is preliminary engineering report. And when you do that, you have to look at a lot of different analysis. And you have to give different alternatives to how you solve that problem. The reason you only do the first phase, what we call the first study and report phase, is because once you go through all the alternatives and the analysis of how you solve that problem, we come back to you as part of this process and say, here's alternative one, here's alternative two, here's alternative three. Some of them will be required by funding agencies, some of them, there's just different ways to solve the problem. And when you do that, they all have different costs, they all have different impacts, they all have different variables that you consider. So the reason that you do just the study and report phase is so that you have input on that all the way through the process. It would be crazy if I was sitting in your seat to walk in and say, well, here's a preliminary engineering report, and here's what it's going to cost to design a project. When you've not actually seen the cost estimates for what the alternatives are, you don't understand how the funding is going to come about, whether you even want to move forward with how the funding agencies in the state's ultimately going to support the city in solving this problem for the region. Because that's why you're doing it. So that's why it's just a study and report phase. And we kind of, the other phases are preliminary design, final design, engineering during construction, that whole other process. But that's why you just do that first initial study and report phase. So I thought I'd elaborate a little bit on that. I know you know it, but sometimes we get so used to talking in acronyms that sometimes we don't slow down.
Yeah. So what I'd like to add to that, Clay and Cody, is, Council, this is our move as a city to secure our number one bulk sales customer, Golly River P S D. As a matter of fact, we call this, I'm calling this, the James Corbett Project. Because this is James's, you know, this is basically James's idea and James's push so that we can secure our bulk cell customer, Golly River P S D. There's a lot of wrangling been going on that we've been involved in for a long time. As a matter of fact, we just found out recently that there's been a move on behalf of West Virginia American Water to secure the management contract of Golly River P S D, which quite frankly, we were unaware of. And they actually asked for an extension to better work the terms of that agreement out, and they were denied by the Public Service Commission. As you all know, long ago, we made an offer to Golly River P S D to manage their utility back to existence. I don't know that I would say prosperity, because I don't know if that's possible. But we did make an extend many offers to manage Golly River P S D from an operational standpoint, not take over the administration aspect of the debt that they owe, so on and so forth, but the management. So now they have a deadline with West Virginia American Water, which quite frankly, I think will fail because of their plan to bring water to that system. It's way, 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 way more than what this reasonable plan is here with an existing water plant that has the capability to supply them water. What this is, is an upgrade of those lines to be able to ensure that we can push the demand that they need at the prison, because that's where the big faux pas has been with Golly River P S D. So that's what this project is all about, is doing what we exist to do. We're a regional water plant. That's what it was built for. I also tell everybody, you know, we operate that plant probably at best 35% of its capacity. So this indeed is a move on our behalf to secure the funds and also the means to upgrade our ability to supply them the water they need. And not only that, there's another spin on this, and James, you can jump anytime you want, with Wilderness. You know, what's going on with Wilderness and the expansion with Young Life and so on and so forth. It's always been that we are here, we're in place already with the regional water plant, that we should be able to supply that water too. We can. The challenge in that's Golly River P S D, when they need water and they can't give it to Wilderness. So with this project, there will be no question as to the demand, us meeting the demand of both Golly River P S D supplying water to the prison and being able to give Wilderness all the water they need. So James, you want to add anything to that?
No, it's just that, you know, it's a squeeze play is basically what it is. Because Wilderness, if I was on their side of the table, I could see where they were coming from, because there's been multiple times that they have called to buy water from Golly River P S D, and they've been told, our tanks are low, you can't get the water. Well, we supply the water to that tank. And it's just because of their operation and management, they can't get the water this time to Wilderness. And so, you know, there was a plan with the Young Life project that we was going to supply the water through Golly River P S D for the Young Life. But I think that that plan is pretty well-banished. I think there's other options on the table they're looking at than the water coming from us.
Yep.
And that's, you know, and now, because, you know, it's with this O N M, this operation and management of Golly River, it's not a solid enough thing for them to battle what they're invested in with this Young Life project, how massive it is. They can't depend on someone that's unreliable to supply water for that project. Although, you know, we furnish the water, but it goes through them to get to Wilderness. And Wilderness, they just don't feel comfortable with the way things has been going with. They just feel real uneasy. They're going to get into the middle of their major season, and they're going to get cut off and say, well, you know, we got a bad lick at Swiss, we, our tanks low, we can't get any more water. Then, you know, they're, they're going to be in a pickle. And I think that's why they're looking at other avenues to supply water for, for Young Life, which doesn't include us.
And this will take care of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, this will definitely, this will definitely put the process in place that we can supply the water, the demand that both of those entities have. And it's the most, it's the most cost effective, too.
Yeah, because the big thing is, you know, and this has been on the governor's desk now for two years, it's the Mount Olive Correction Facility, is that Golly River P S D, you know, they was almost, they buy all their water from Canal Falls P S D to supply the prison. Well, Canal Falls has been deemed a failing utility, a failing utility. And because their plant is in almost issue repair because of the aging and different things going on, that's where the shortage comes from for the prison. So West Virginia American Water, they jumped in and looked at a plan to get water to the prison coming from the Charleston area with a price tag around $15 million. And that's bypassing Canal Falls and everything. And that's taken the, that's taken all the revenue from Golly River P S D, just bypassing everybody. So that's when we kind of put our heads together and said, oh, wait a minute. You know, we can do this for a fraction of the cost with upgrades here to supply the prison on an emergency, temporary, part-time, full-time basis, and we can supply the prison with the water they require.
Okay.
So Wilderness was still, for the first to supply, was it still Golly?
That is correct. Our connection is actually, you know, our bulk water meter feeds Golly, and then Golly has a bulk water meter that feeds Wilderness. But sadly enough, as we've had challenges for decades, the city of Somersville built a regional water plant. And right now, just it's no secret Wilderness is after an upgrade to be able to increase their pumping capacity and plant capacity. And let alone, you know, here in the, in the region, we have a regional water plant operating at about 35% of its capacity. So, you know, it's always been our mission to, you know, provide the water, the bulk water cells that the plant was built to do. And so, and then, you know, even when you talk about Golly River P S D, and you look at their rates, current rate structure, and then you go out and look at West Virginia American Water's rate structure, you know, at some point in time, we think about the consumer and, you know, how they can bring some water source in that costs in the numbers that James just mentioned, where we can do it for a fraction of those costs. So that's, that's why we're here today. And we hope to be able to move on and sell this through the I J D C and the Public Service Commission and get everybody to buy in, because this really is the solution to the problem.
Yeah, if you look regionally, this makes the most cost-effective, efficient use of state dollars to be able to supply the region. I mean, you've already built the asset for the treatment plant. The mayor mentioned it's 35% utilized. It's there, operates great, runs well. You have, you have connection issue between the tank and the plant, hydraulically. So you solve that, you're able to really bolster how much you can send towards Golly River and Wilderness and solve a lot of problems, in my opinion.
And, you know, it's interesting, because even right now, we're supplying the pipeliners with 100,000 gallons a day of water that they're taking out of our system. It doesn't even create a hiccup. I mean, we've got that kind of capacity. And that's what the plant was built for back in the day. And of course, you know, leadership and, you know, governments change, as ours has in the state of West Virginia. Back at the time when the city built the regional water plant, they were going to go to the regional concept. Well, then politics plays in, and then they say, oh, no, we're going to keep all these individual entities plugging away. And at the end of the day, you know, we battled with the Nettie Levy project, and Lord knows, you know, they've got all kinds of issues with no water and, you know, water outages and boil water advisories. And, you know, it was, you know, well over a decade ago that we spent quite a bit of money as a city challenging that effort for their plant upgrade. And they got it. And, you know, they're still in the same woes that they were back when we tried to be the water supply for them. So anyway, anything else, guys?
No. Like I said, we have copies of the agreement. So again, this is, so the cost of the preliminary analysis is $20,000. So that's all the alternatives. That's the funding applications we work with Region Four to submit. That's attending the meetings. It's going to meet with the prisons. It's, it's all those things that need evaluated and done as part of that process.
And just so Council understands, you get paid if we get paid.
Correct.
Yeah. So if, if this project's funded, they get paid. So what we need is, we need approval for the project and the current agreement that we have before us. And Council, because we put this together, if you want to go ahead and
Yeah, and if there are questions, or if you want to review it, however you want to handle it, we're okay, you know.
Council, you tell me your woes. This is a standard agreement that we've done. We're in many partnerships with Thrasher Engineering. If you want to wait until the next meeting to approve this, to review it, we can do so. Or I would entertain a motion for approval. So we have a first and a second, any discussion?
What do you think?
We're approving for this agreement, which is $20,000. And of course, the only way they get paid is if all the funding for this comes together. They get paid when we get paid. But, but they were selected as our engineers. So through this entire process, from the engineering aspect of bringing this project together, they'll be the benefactors and a great partner. And I can't say enough about our relationship with Thrasher Engineering. So we have a first and a second. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay.
What is, how is this type of Webster Road water line replacement?
It was the name that was discussed. I mean, it was, I'd be honest with you, it's arbitrary. It was the name that was in the R F P, in the discussions, so that's
And James, why don't you come forward to the podium? And being fair to Council, why don't you explain to them exactly what this project is going to do for our system?
Well, you know, right now, we have one primary feed that comes into Somersville, feeds our tanks from Pec Tank, goes across Grove Street, comes right by this building, goes to our tanks. And our plant feeds our system from the north side of the city, from North Side, actually, North Side Drive. And with all of our tanks and everything full on this end of town, you know, and this old feed that comes through, when we pull, when we want to put the amount of water that we potentially can put down to Golly River P S D, that's a draw on this system down here. So if we go back to our next largest main is which, the West Webster Fairview Heights area, and it depends on these guys how the hydraulics works out, is we have 10-inch main back there that if we come through down Webster Road and across through down Lee Street and right back out this way, then we could basically, once we fill up our system, and with the telemetry and the, with these valves that works, that our guys can operate from the plant, they can shut two valves off up here at a given time, then they can open up this 10-inch, although we'll be using off this 10-inch. But they can open up a valve and bypass this end of town and push the water from the north side past here and not do a draw on this end of town. And we could put more water without affecting any, any of our hydraulics on this end of town pulling these tanks down. We can push it past these things and put it directly to Golly River's first tank and then push it all the way down 39.
So this project actually upgrades line size?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's replacing the line on Webster Road, which is, it is, it is an aging infrastructure. It's a four-inch line, it's six, the four, back to six, and then four. And this is going probably with an 80-inch, just guessing, I'm not an engineer, an 80-inch all the way through here. And then sometime in the future, the line, the main feed in the Somersville, which comes through the Tully Farm, and actually above the cemetery up here. If ever a reason that line is the fail, that line was put in 1968, we have a backup feed to the downtown area here also. It can be switched over and be utilized by the directions.
It'll give you a lot of flexibility. And I guess I should have said, we could have called it just water system improvements, but we know it's on, if you upgrade the line on Webster Road. That's why I said it was kind of arbitrary. I mean, what you name it.
Well, my only question is, we have Webster Road project. It happens to be a sidewalk project.
Oh, okay.
So when we saw, when I saw this on the agenda, I said, what is it?
That's why we call it the Webster Road. We can rename it to whatever you want.
No, it's
I mean, it's arbitrary.
I just didn't understand what I was looking at.
But I do understand your point of question.
Yeah.
Any questions about the project?
No.
Okay. And it's, it's not only going to enhance our ability to sell bulk water, it's also going to be a major upgrade overdue for our system and some of the oldest infrastructure that we currently have in our system, which is through the downtown area.
Yeah, that, again, this line were upgraded. It was actually put in 1952.
Yeah, wow.
Yes.
Okay, Council, we have a first and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Guys, thanks a bunch.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Look forward to working with you.
When you're done with those, send them to Cassie.
Okay. I'll get them signed and we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, guys. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval to open a new bank account for the opioid settlement fund. Opioid. Opioid. My wife always corrects me. I don't know why I have a problem with that word.
Opioid.
Opioid. Opioid. I don't know what, it's one of them words that just Yeah. Okay, anyway, we have to open up a bank account to receive those funds. And it's, it's a monitored bank account because of the statute requirement on expenditure of those funds. Of course, 50% of them have to be used for the treatment intervention, prevention, those causes, which we've kind of gone into an agreement with the Nicholas Intervention Coalition and the County Commission, that we will disperse our funds to the Nicholas Intervention Coalition, which the city has a seat on, as well as the County Commission. And then the other 50% are just basically recoup funds for the city in the funding that we have proved that we've spent, expended on the, the issue of the drug, drug situation in our community. So
So you have to have a different account.
Yeah, we have to have a special bank account once we start receiving those funds. So entertain a motion?
So do.
Got a first and a second. All those in favor, or any discussion, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Recorder's report?
No report.
No report. Mayor's report. Okay, Council, got a, just a short list of stuff I want to go through. First of all, I want to remind you all, Friday, please, if you can, come to the city breakfast, city employee breakfast. By the way, this is a city employee and city council only breakfast. It's not a community breakfast. 8:00 a.m. at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. I want to also remind everybody that Friday at 6:00 p.m. is the annual Christmas parade here at the city of Somersville. Santa and Mrs. Claus coming to town. Got some great activities planned here at the pavilion. The city will be serving its traditional cookies and hot cocoa. And then this year, we also have, I Heart Church is going to set up their wagon outside, their food wagon, and they're going to be giving hot dogs and drinks and chips. So it's sure to be a good time. Everybody is welcome. I want to also remind you, Council, put one, put a brochure at all of your spots there tonight. Greenbrier, the Greenbrier Valley Theater is presenting a Christmas carol at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. If you are out there and you've never bought a ticket and attended one of these, they're absolutely fabulous. First-class theater presentation by the Greenbrier Valley Theater. So that's this Friday. And you got the opportunity to take in first the Christmas parade, and then dinner served at 6:45 with the show starting at 7:45 at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. The last thing I want to say, Council, is currently working with, the Appalachian Regional Commission gave a grant to install E V charging stations, electric vehicle charging stations. And the city of Somersville has been selected by Professor Chin out of Tennessee Technology University, who is actually, it's a college in Tennessee that actually secured the A R C grant. And we've been selected as, as a site for one of the upgraded charging stations. I will tell you that our first rule meeting with Professor Chin is Wednesday morning. But I've already reached out to First Energy in a partnership. The actual charging station is completely paid for by the grant, which is pretty awesome. We're getting one of the upgraded charging stations that's a quick charge. It doesn't take, you know, a lot of them you pull into, it takes a long time to charge. This one is supposed to be a super charge station that charges a lot faster. And so we've reached out to First Energy, trying to work on site selection, because this charging station requires three-phase power. So we're going to try to partner somehow with somebody at North Side to install this. And then the city, I'm looking for First Energy to partner with us, which I've reached out to First Energy. And it looks apparent that they're going to do what they can to partner with us on the install. But we're definitely going to move forward on this program to get a electric vehicle charging system here in the city of Somersville. I got to tell you, I get emails regularly from people that come through the area that want to charge their electric vehicle, and they get frustrated because we do have them, but they're privately owned. They're not, they're not public charging stations. I think you've got one at North Side. Yeah, okay, it is public. Okay, yeah. But anyway, this, is it one of the supercharge?
It's one of the fast ones.
Is it? Okay, okay, good deal.
But they keep changing them. It's constant change and upgrades.
Okay, okay. But anyway, we're going to move forward with this partnership and this grant opportunity to have an install, a charging station. And again, even though North Side has one, or mid, or, yeah, mid-state does.
Mid-state has one at Flatwoods.
Okay, and then in North Side, yeah.
They constantly need extra ones because it's
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, there's even people, there's a gentleman that actually comes from Morgantown that works here. And he gets aggravated because I guess your charging station here will be full. So he's got to go back to Flatwoods and charge before he can go back to Morgantown. I guess he works in this area. So anyway, it's a need. Electric vehicles are on the horizon. And so as a community, we need to do what we can. And this is an opportunity for us to get one at pretty much no cost, whatever the install will be. And of course, details will come. Our first rule meeting with them is Wednesday morning. So I just wanted to make you all aware of this opportunity that we're going to try to take advantage of. The last thing I want to tell you, Council, is that we received a certificate of appreciation from Gold Star Mothers and West Virginia Veterans Appreciation Project for our participation in the Gold Mothers Gold Star Bridge Ride that we participated in this past summer. So anyway, we got a certificate from them, and we're appreciative of them. And certainly, we'll do what we can to continue to support the cause. That includes the mayor's report. Any council reports? Okay, I need to run into a quick executive session for the purposes of personnel matters. And of course, it's in accordance with West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. And it's a personnel matter. I would like to entertain a motion for executive I would like to entertain a motion for executive session. A first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Thank you all.